Meeting of the Rockingham School District to order. It's Wednesday, July 18, 2018 at 5:06. Not bad, actually. Um, pledge of allegiance. We'll have Mr. Haas today.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since we have lots of new faces here tonight, I think we'll all go around the room and introduce ourselves. Rick Holloway, I live in Saxons River, which is a village in the town of Rockingham, for those who aren't familiar with the area. I'm the chair of the Rockingham School Board.
Edie Louko, I'm the business manager for the SU.
My name's Josh Aberman. I am the board recorder. I also work for the district as a special ed para.
Kristen Swartout, I live in Saxons River and I work in Brattleboro and I have a junior at the high school.
Margot Gia, and I also happen to live Saxons River, um, board member of the Rockingham School Board, and also one of the representatives to the supervisory union board. The, um, I have two children, one in middle school and one in high school.
Karen Bukowski, I'm principal at Bellas Falls Middle School.
Andrew Haas, I'm director of student sports services.
Rick Schuman, director of maintenance, Rockingham School District.
Lee Carey, assistant superintendent.
Chris Pratt, superintendent. I'm very thrilled to be here and excited to get things underway.
Thanks a lot. Um, so we have no adjustments to the agenda today. View and approve board minutes for June 18, 2018, and the joint board minutes.
So I had...
Of June 4.
I had a quick up correction for the June 18 joint, oh no, the joint board meeting on June 4, under Rockingham. There's a Brenda, I don't remember the last name, you don't have it in front of me, that's listed under Rockingham. She is not a Rockingham.
Brenda Farkas.
Yes.
She is high school.
She is supposed to be moved.
All in favor of approving both sets of minutes? Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? No. Communication and public comment? Have you guys heard none?
No.
Policies, as far as I know, there's nothing. Reports, superintendent.
Way to start. Like I said, I'm happy to be here. Um, as you can see, we have a lot of new faces around the table here, um, but I figure I just give you a quick update in what we've been doing in the past, what, 10 days? Nine, 10 days? Um, there's been some office movement, um, to make office space for our new superintendent, assistant superintendent, Carey. Um, so what we've done is that my office has stayed where Chris's office is, where Sue used to be. Lynn now resides in that office. Sue moved over to where Missy, curriculum director, used to be, and then Missy moved upstairs to the second floor next to special education and the conference room that was up there. So, um, she's there now. So there's a lot of movement. Um, I thank Rick and his, his workers because without them it would have been possible. I mean, that was a lot of work and a lot of movement and, you know, I think they got it done within four days, so thank you to you and your guys.
You're welcome.
We really appreciated that. Um, we still, uh...
It looks great, by the way. I was making, I don't know if you've ever been in Chris's office, but it's completely different. I'll walk in and I'll be like, "Where am I?"
Yeah, so it's, so it's been nice. I mean, we've been busy moving amongst other things. Um, I've also, uh, I forget, I can call it now, you know, it'd be nice to have the public be aware of it, too. Um, if you go into the website now and you go into district info and the superintendent, you're gonna have this link here, which is a blog that set up that, um, I set up and I've done in the past, and it's open to the public and anyone wants to click on it. And I just try to keep it updated as daily as possible as I can. And, um, you know, I already got a few posts in here. Um, this right here is pretty much what we just talked about in regards to office movement. Um, that's, you know, my office, Chris Kibbe's old office, that's where Sue used to be and that's where Lynn is now. Um, that's now Missy's office upstairs, and that is where Sue is now. So, a lot of movement. Um, like I said, I'm gonna keep this posted as much as I, up to date as much as I can. I think it's good for the, for the community and for the board to be updated on a regular basis rather than me reporting out once a month. It allows us to talk more about, um, students and education. Um, that's the most recent legislative report we have, um, and then I always put in the legislative updates we have, too. Um, most recent mutual survey as well. So, you know, I'll keep this up to date and so, you know, public, general public, um, community, board members, keep an eye on things they give you, and I'm giving, keeping you in the loop in regards to day-to-day stuff that goes on around the, around the district. Beyond that, we still have, um, we've got some hiring we've been working on. We're still interviewing, the process of interviewing for the front desk reception area. We've got, we're looking for an occupational therapist, Title I literacy teacher, and some special ed positions as a teacher and para. But I think all in all, through the SU office and the principals, we've all been very busy filling some positions, but we're making great progress and we're almost there. Um, so beyond that, myself and Lynn went around and we visited most of the schools last week. We were able to get into some of them, some of them are, you know, um, well underway in the summer projects. Um, I then followed up and took Elizabeth Haddie around to the schools. Um, she's the new principal in Grafton, Athens, Grafton, and so we went around to a lot of the schools and we actually also went by the Compass School. So we've been busy trying to get out and about and, um, work on different things, um, technology-wise, office-wise, policy-wise, um, but it's been, it's been a great start so far, I think. Everyone's been really nice, very helpful, and it's, you know, we have a great team. And then next, um, in a couple weeks, we'll be going off to August, July 31st to August 2nd, we have our VPA conference up at Killington, and on the third day, we're gonna take a half a day and the administrative team, all the principals, myself, curriculum directors, will be having our own retreat for the last half day of that. So, um, just to get to know each other and, um, do some final tweaking before the school year gets underway. So, that's what we've been up to so far, in a nutshell.
Any questions for Chris? Erin, did you bring a report for us?
I did not, other than, uh...
It's summertime?
There, three questions are up, yeah. I'll let that stand.
Okay.
Edie? No, nothing from me.
Wow. Nothing from the WNSU board, 'cause that meeting is next, next week, I understand, which I won't be at.
I have it on my calendar.
I can actually go to that meeting.
I'll appoint you as our, as my representative, just in case. Well, formally do it now, just in case.
What time is it?
Those are 6:30.
I don't believe we have any other committee reports. Unfinished business for discussion, action. Continued discussion of board goals. Does anybody remember where we left off with all that? Were you here when we...
I was here and I, I thought, um, there was gonna be a second draft circular, theoretically, maybe?
Yeah. This is the one Chris left me. I don't know if it's up to date or not, but...
Yeah, it looks like the, in black is what was presented, then the red were all of our, is there any chance you could make us some copies of that?
Absolutely.
Do we wanna go into it cold or do we wanna put it on, like, have to have...
Chris, do you want it in color? If you do, I'll send it upstairs.
Yeah, if you could do it in color, that'd be great.
Otherwise, it's something come out black.
You want us to do it in cold?
Well, we'll at least get copies of it and we can place over, so why don't we, um, while we wait for Edie to do that, why don't we skip to Dee and have Mr. Schuman enlighten us about the boiler. Okay. Um, well, there's not much to update, other than that we had the site visit and walkthrough date yesterday. Uh, we had two contracts to show up. The, uh, engineers believe we may get another visit, uh, because the site visit was not mandatory, so, um, they can contact me. My contact info is on the RFP. Um, in fact, one of the site visits just, they happened after 9:30, so they shut up between 10 and 10:30. So, um, hopefully we'll get more than those two. Um, I, I don't know if Edie's gonna weigh in on this, but, um, she said that we would have to request a waiver from the state if we get less than three, but if it was in the paper, uh, which was our hope to do, I know Edie and I were trying to get that done, she was, wasn't quite sure if that did get in the paper or not. If it was, I don't think, believe we need to request a waiver from the state. If we only get, say, one or two, uh, proposals, bids.
I believe that's correct, yeah.
Yeah, so hopefully it did get in the paper. If Edie was checking on that, I don't know if she's got an answer on that.
We could double check on that, make Edie feel more comfortable.
Yes.
So, the 25th is the, is...
Correct, yeah.
And then the proposal openings are the 31st at 2.
Correct. Yeah, I believe the submission of proposals is 5:00 PM.
Right.
I have that in mind.
Yeah, that's right.
So after, so then at our, you don't need anything from us until what's probably our August 6th meeting, where we then approve which proposal. Do you think you'll be ready by then?
Do I think, what will be ready by then?
But if you open them on the 31st, do you think you'll be ready by the 6th to...
Yeah. I don't see why not, yep. August 6th, right, that's the first Monday, right?
That would be the first Monday. This is where Margot and Kristen will say, "Yeah."
I believe we have to be...
I won't be at that one.
Yeah.
They won't be here.
Yeah, we have to be ready by then.
So it really depends on Ed and you. Well, no.
No, it won't work.
There's only four...
What happened to him with the other board member?
Um, didn't work out.
Oh, okay. Okay. I possibly maybe could call.
That would work if Ed was here. Or if Margot and you could call, I'd be here by myself.
I would be glad you think I'm available to call.
Okay. Well... And you, so you've both begun all week that weekend, probably?
Good chunk of it.
We'd like to get this approved soon, right?
Yeah, I mean, this project's gotta be underway.
The following, are you guys back the following week or are you gone for two weeks?
I wish.
I'm on vacation the following week, but, um, my life is full of compromise and sacrifice, so...
I will be back the 14th, not the 13th. I'll be around the 14th and 15th and 16th.
I don't know if we'd be able to do it any sooner than the 14th. Unless we did it...
If we had a daytime meeting...
The first, second, or third of August?
If we had a daytime meeting, I could probably call in, but not the evening of the 6th.
I think it's still Sunday, maybe?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanted, those early days weren't, weren't better for me.
The second and Thursday?
Yeah.
Second is a possibility for me.
The Thursday.
Right.
We could do it either as early or late as...
I could call in if it's during the day, I could call in, and if it's this time or later, I could raise the skin. Yep. I could, but I would be around the second and the third.
I haven't gone around by the 3rd, but the second...
Well, let's pick, later we'll pick a time, but can we, we should plan on a special meeting on the 2nd to approve the...
The only, the only agenda item I want on that meeting is to approve the wood boiler
proposal.
Right.
Unless there's something else that really, like, if there's any appointments or something that we really have to do, but...
Yeah, I guess we should update Edie on this discussion.
Okay.
'Cause, no, we won't have a forum for our meeting on August 6th.
All right.
So we're gonna have a special meeting at a time to be determined on Thursday, August 2nd to approve the proposal for the wood boiler.
Okay.
Or to tentatively approve.
Yep, makes sense.
Right, 'cause the opening's the 31st, Edie, on the Tuesday, so that should be fine.
Yep, that'll give us time to take a look and see what...
Right.
All right. Nope, that works, as far as I know.
And, you know, did you, uh, did you find out that Ed did go into paper for me?
I emailed Sue after our email, because I know she's been really busy with the move and everything.
Yep.
Um, it's nice to have three anyway, but if we can't get three, I think the AOE will tell us we don't need a waiver with the newspaper.
Or 'cause it was posted.
Right, right.
So we'll find out, I guess, tomorrow.
Yeah, and the way, was it Tom we emailed back and thought we would get a third one?
He did, but that, he's basing that upon the fact we had two visits yesterday. I know, I'm pretty sure one is definitely gonna bid, the other one I'm not sure.
Oh, may not, because more might not.
You might not, plus the other one, we haven't heard from yet, so, yeah. Hopefully they do, they do make a call.
I'm sure she did, but I just wanna confirm it and it would be good to have a copy of the ad in the filing in case the AOE ever asks for it.
Right.
So...
And this is where the contractor's doing the installation. We selected the specific equipment we're putting in this time, correct?
We, we did, yeah. I don't think there was any leeway in that. We're not trying to have more specifics because that question did come up yesterday.
Okay, so, do you wanna just look over the board goal briefly and then we can have them, see if there's any surprises or anything that we, before we come, and then we can add that, stop to the next special meeting, to the next meeting for our ongoing...
Next, we're good.
Well, I also have, um, Edie and I weren't sure if you had, if this was, just dispersed the last time, is the capital projects and reserve fund information? So I'll just pass this around the same time, so you have it.
Yeah, 'cause I'm using it now, maybe? I have the copy on the back, but I haven't got it.
Have you, do you have a chance to look through this all back?
Yeah. Yeah, look, you know, looking through it and everything, it seemed to, um, I was looking through this along with the continuous improvement plans that were put in place, they align pretty well in regards to, you know, what the, what's looking at and what the schools have put together for their, for their improvement plans, so... It seems like a lot of it's been completed already as well.
Chris, because Karen gave us a wonderful template to start with.
This is different from what I thought we were looking at.
Yeah, these are the Rockingham ones.
Oh, no, these are the SU's. No.
Haven't seen the Rockingham ones. I'm good.
We can't, can't move forward tonight.
All that I have is the template that I originally gave you. I don't have any notes from that.
Chris was taking notes, so...
I have notes from the minutes of the meeting. I guess we recommended some changes and edits, and I have those, if you want me to dig them out.
I might need to resurrect those. We did have a quick discussion.
Right, and we made some, we eliminated some we thought were redundant and collapsed some.
Yeah, here's the, I have, here's the, the fairly in-depth minutes that Josh took, where we, we talked about them, so...
I'm, uh, sharing with you, Chris, the, all that it was, was a sheet with a lot of sample type, you know, school board goals, et cetera, that was, that I put together to help, um, start the discussion, but I didn't take any notes that, and that, that was the, we met at Saxons River that night, as I recall.
Right.
Yeah, I don't have any notes or anything like that. I have the, the original sheet, which I just shared with Chris Pratt.
So I guess my recommendation is that maybe we can try to assemble the notes from that evening and create an updated draft from that, so that we may have something to review. So I guess the question is, cool.
And, look, I'm, uh, I found what I have, and I'm gonna email it to Rick right now.
Yeah, I think we...
Thank you, Karen.
We, um, in the minutes from that meeting here, like, I suggested that we pick four, and I think throughout the notes that you took, I think we have the four kind of main bullet points that we decided to pick, and maybe if other, I'll look at home and see if I have any handwritten notes on the thing that Chris, or that Bukowski gave us.
I mean, 'cause we did a lot of wording changes and, yeah, as Kristen said, we collapsed things and did it together. So I guess what's the next steps in terms of who's gonna take on sort of creating the draft, some of the pieces?
I will try to dig up, I'll try to dig up what I have through my pile of papers at home. They're all on a nice neat pile, it's about this big, you know? Even though I try to go paperless, I found the more you try to go paperless, the more paperwork you get.
More paper accumulates.
Got it. Um, I'll see if I can find anything there, including finding what Ms. Bukowski sent us. I'll try to take what Josh did and separate out just like the, maybe if there's the four main bullet points we put in there and then, um, have that ready for our first meeting, probably, that will be in September.
So we're not gonna track the 30th, are we?
Maybe the 20th?
I can never remember if the first or third is the standard meeting date.
It's the first and the third. So the first would be the 6th, the third, and, oh, yeah, would be the 20th. So for our next meeting on the 20th, we're all gonna be here.
I'll be here.
Our, our meeting on the 20th. Um, follow-up to the YMCA building concern. Looks like somebody's living there now.
Really?
Stuff in the windows and some guy was out sitting on the porch yesterday.
Did we receive any feedback from the letter that was sent?
I know I haven't received any correspondence from them since the letter that was sent on June 18th, or it's in the packet, I haven't received anything.
I wasn't here for that, but that went to Chuck Wise?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the attachment is just a letter that we did send to Chuck Wise. Or we sent to, we sent, actually, we sent it to Deb Wright.
The head of the village trustees?
President of the village trustees. She did note at the WNSU meeting that she had received it.
From this letter, does it seem that any of the stuff that was requested has been taken care of or did?
Up to my knowledge, just on a casual observance, it doesn't seem like it.
No, I don't think anything is...
And I don't know when that board typically meets, some other day they even had time to address it, or...
Also... They could follow up and just, I think, call just to see, you know, what we can do there.
You know a good way to do it might be? 'Cause she's on the WNSU board, or the, she's on the high school board and the WNSU board, but it might not be a, a nice diplomatic way to do it. Hi, Deb, if you're watching. Might be just, they, um, just drop in and introduce yourself to, um, her, there's a new town manager, I think.
Yep, she started.
Just started. Um, Deb is the village trust, villi, president of the village trustees. I think Sue Hammond is the, um, chair of the Rockingham.
She, I don't share.
Board, I think she is. And then, yeah, Chuck Wise is the, is the, um, planning and zoning.
Right. Wondering if he, if the zoning people are, want to enforce the ordinance.
Yeah, we might, we might wanna just CC him on the letter.
Yeah, well, the letter's already been sent, but, so what I was suggesting is that Mr. Pratt, perhaps you, you know, make a visit, introduce himself, maybe take Lynn with you to the...
Yeah, 'cause we were gonna go around next week to get into the community and introduce ourselves to, you know, get into the police station, the fire station areas like that, so it'd be a good opportunity. I wanted to swing in there anyways, just to introduce ourselves, so...
At that time, then you could ask him, you know, for a follow-up sometime, break, break there. New business for discussion or action, request for unpaid leave. Does anybody have anything more on the YMCA building? I'll follow up on it, too.
So here's the, the request here.
Would you like me to read it or pass it around? Read it, unless there's reason that we...
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty open. It says, "To whom may concern, I am writing to request the approval of taken three unpaid days on July 5th, July 6th, and July 9th. The reason for my request is due to the fact that I have not worked for the district long enough to have approved any vacation time. Thank you in advance for your consideration in this matter. I'm not sure who it's from, I couldn't read the signature, but someone else might be able to."
Is that Ted?
Ted Gabry.
Ted Gabry.
Ted Gabry?
Yep.
He is?
It's one of my employees.
The studio? It's a top two. Oh, there it is.
Yes, so Ted had to take care of some business with his old house down... Yeah, so Ted had to take care of some business with his old house down, Rhode Island. It was unexpected, so he had to take those days for, to take care of some business with the house they're trying to sell, he and his wife, so...
Are you supporting?
I am supporting this. Ted's been a good sub for us over the last couple of years, now he's finally a full-time employee and, yeah. As you know, we really hadn't accrued any time.
Well, he was the one that we just recently appointed, right?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we grant three days unpaid leave to Ted.
Gabry.
Gabry.
All in favor? Are any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Appointments and resignations.
We have a couple of appointments here. We have, um, three. We have for Saxons River Grade 4, Loretta Rose. She has 18 years of elementary experience. She's mostly from West Virginia, but recently she's, it's my understanding, she's living in New Hampshire. She has her master's in education and a minor in special education, so... Pass that one on, you can take a look at the specifics. I've got all our information there. The next one is Amanda Thembridge, reading teacher, .5 FTE. She has four years of prior reading teacher experience. She's from New Jersey, and she also has a master's in reading and a minor in special education. So we're getting some very highly qual, qualified candidates here. And the last one, she's from Bellas Falls Middle School, and that's Linda Alvarez. And she has 11 years of experience in reading, language arts, special education. Most recently, she's from Brattabarot, and she has her bachelor's in history and a minor in education. So I don't know if Karen, you wanted to speak more about her, but...
She has 10 years of teaching experience in Tallahassee, Florida. But we picked them on a year or two ago and opened a business, but is getting back in to teaching and is duly certified in both ELA and social studies, which serves us very well in meeting our needs.
So should we go each watch the number job?
We often do them as a group.
Well, can we do these as a group? Well, I'll make a motion that we appoint Loretta Rose as a classroom teacher at Saxons River Elementary School. Amanda Thembridge as a read, halftime reading teacher at Saxons River Elementary School. And Linda Alvarez at the Bellas Falls Middle School.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Director's comments. Margot?
Melissa, good night. Welcome to all of the new supervisory union staff. We're excited to have you all on board.
Thank you.
Kristen?
Yeah, also welcome to everybody, and glad you're here, and looking forward to working with all of you.
I'll agree with all that, and to everyone out there in the world that we need another board member. We could really use another board member. You can contact Mr. Pratt, or me, or almost anyone else at this table can direct you on who you should contact and how you should do it, so please...
It's a lot of fun.
Yeah, give us a call. See, it's not that bad. It was pretty smooth here tonight. So date of the next board meeting, so we'll have the special meeting on the 2nd. So I don't know if that counts as our next board meeting, or if we wanted to just go ahead and plan the one for the 20th now, as well as our actual next board meeting. So we'll have a special meeting, August 2nd. What time? Kristen?
I, without looking at my work schedule, I don't know what's going, going on that day, but I don't think, I think I could call in if it's during daytime. Otherwise, I could come here at midnight, evening time, whatever's easiest for everybody else.
So you two, neither of you two will be here?
Right, the, um, all, two of us, Andy and Karen, will all be up in, at Cali.
So Rick and Edie? So what time do you think would work for you, Margot?
I think I'm flexible. I have like two work meetings that are, those are potential.
Do we wanna shoot for 5:00, and Kristen can call in if need be?
If I think I'm, yeah, that will work.
That way you two don't have to stay super long?
It's statistical season, so I'll be here any last week.
So special meeting, August 2nd, 5:00, in Edie's office.
There you go. With candy.
With candy.
Rick, would you be willing to reach out to Ed and just tell him about it, so we get on his calendar?
And then we'll have our regularly scheduled meeting, August 20th, 5:30. And we'll just plan on doing it here, because schools aren't open and... With that, I will adjourn this meeting.